Welcome, everybody, to the rules meeting of April 2nd, 2019, times 5:30 p.m. Let's see, we've got minutes. I see that you sent us the minutes for the couple meetings.
Yes, there was one minor correction by Barbara. I had cut and paste, and I had February 27th on both of them, so we changed it to March 14th.
All right.
We approved 14th and the February 27th.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, it's approved.
You're gonna have to do the 18th.
Sure.
December.
December 18th, yes. Yeah, thank you for reminding me about that.
All I did was have to watch myself.
Oh.
I hated it, so.
Yeah, it can be an experience. The only thing on our agenda tonight is Counselor Zarek's Firearms Safety and Against Gun Violence Resolution. Counselor Zarek, would you like to speak?
Counselor, do you mind your public speak first?
Oh, yeah, actually, apologies. Public speak.
Just let me know who you are, when you speak. Nothing, Wes?
I'll just address everyone. My name is Anne Thalheimer.
Anne.
Anne with an E, A-N-E. My name is T-H-A-L-H-E-I-M-E-R. I'm at 8 Clark Street in Holyoke.
Mm-hmm.
And I just wanted to, again, up here before the subcommittee and express my support of this resolution. I think East Hampton has the chance to be really forward-thinking in putting this forward, and, again, in my capacity as a gun violence survivor in my work with Moms Demand Action and Every Town For Gun Safety. This is important. I would love to see East Hampton move on this, and I will ask you questions that you might have for me. I've already addressed the committee at large, but I wanted to come and physically again be present to express support for this.
Great.
Thank you.
Welcome. We're in the middle of a public speak, if you'd like to say anything.
All right. I'm ready to hear.
All right, well, if that's it for public speak, then would you like to...
Sure, yes. Thank you, Chairman Peake, Chairperson Peake, sorry. Well, what can I say? I covered it in the cover letter that's submitted, it's part of the public record. I think that, you know, growing up, coming into adulthood during the time of Columbine and kind of watching a variety of gun-related tragedies, Sandy Hook, Parkland, for me, the Tree of Life synagogue issue really struck close to home, the Las Vegas shooting, I mean, there's been a number of these. I feel very helpless. I don't know if I can necessarily do anything to change anything, but I feel that one of the opportunities I have as an elected official is to be able to, to kind of speak my position and encourage those around me to do so as well. I think that the gun violence that we've seen over these, over this time, like I said, since Columbine and going forward, I think it's becoming a national epidemic. And I felt that I had an opportunity to put my voice to this and to encourage those around me to put their voice to this. And I was able to sit down with the chief and ask him what he thought that the best way to go about this was, the local elected official, and he recommended a resolution. I want to be clear that as part of this, that I am 100% in support of gun ownership. I've been a gun owner. I'm not a gun owner currently in Massachusetts, but other states I've lived in, I've owned firearms and used firearms. I think that for the sake of sport and hunting and personal protection, that reasonable and properly licensed gun ownership is part of our Second Amendment rights. But I also support, in saying responsible, I support measures to make sure that we keep firearms in the hands of appropriately licensed and appropriately background-checked individuals and put measures in place to prevent mass shootings such that we've seen in this country. And I've consulted with and reviewed some policy put forward by national anti-gun violence groups such as Moms Demand Action and Every Town For Gun Safety, and done some research as well on some of the organizations involved on the law enforcement side. I've had an opportunity to review this resolution a few times with the chief, who's been very helpful in this process. As part of the resolution, I've encouraged the mayor to join Mayors Against Illegal Guns. Some of the things in here are really just closing loopholes, especially in regards to background checks, as it pertains to things such as straw purchases and some out-of-state gun show purchases, also the reciprocal concealed carry across state lines, which, if some of you aren't familiar, if you are licensed to conceal carry in a state that has very relatively lax carry laws, you can bring it into any other, into any other state and be legally allowed to do so. I would be 100% for advocating on the national level for some sort of federal-level concealed carry that's vigorous. I wouldn't have a problem with that. But I think it poses problems the way it exists right now. You know, we can argue back and forth about whether things like bump stocks, which have recently been prohibited by the DOJ, and high-capacity magazines, whether those really do have a role, by preventing them, whether they do have a role in preventing some of these tragedies. I think that there's advocates on the gun ownership side that will say no, and obviously there's advocates on the gun responsibility, I don't want to say responsibility, there's advocates on the anti-gun violence side that will say absolutely not. I just think that, for the time being, it's reasonable to advocate to reduce these types of things as well. So, that's where I am. You know, I think even if I wasn't an elected official, after seeing all these tragedies that have occurred, I'd be advocating for things like this. I just feel fortunate that I'm able to do so in the position I'm in, so.
Thank you. Chief Mayor, Mayor for the Day. Anything that you would like to say to this?
So, Mayor for the Day, Dominic Mailer, and I reviewed Counselor Zarek's proposal and highlighted it and made some notes on this, and I just have a short memorandum, one for the chair, and, after talking it over. We're in support. We thank you for the opportunity to comment on Counselor Zarek's resolution before the committee, and it is disheartening that we are in need of such a resolution, but it is one that we must for grave public health crisis that's for city, state, and nation gun violence. Last year, I signed On To The Mayor For Our Lives Initiative and did some lobbying and contact with our state and federal delegation around these issues. And the support of this resolution, including the suggestion by Counselor Zarek to join Mayors Against Illegal Guns, is certainly something I am willing to do, and I would see that action as well as what happened, I did last year, to make clear my belief that constitutional rights for law-abiding residents are not compromised by laws and regulations that keep guns away from bad actors, and this resolution certainly does this. I'd ask tonight that the subcommittee report out favorable on this resolution to the full council, and on April 3rd, I will also ask the full council to vote in favor of this resolution, as I'm doing it today. It's not a copy for Counselor Zarek.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, anything you want to say?
Sure.
Or counsel to Counselor Zarek?
Yeah, and as I think the counselors know, typically, most of these sorts of matters, actually almost any matter, usually come forward, question is opposed to me. But I will say that we're fortunate to live in Massachusetts where gun control and firearms licensing regulations are probably the most strict in the country. And that, as a firearms licensing authority, I can tell you that we do our due diligence and work very hard to make sure that gun ownership is in the proper hands and licensing is done to those that should have gun licenses and not to those that shouldn't. So, as far as this goes, I'm in support of it. Counselor Zarek and I have gone back and forth with several drafts, and we've had some pretty good discussions, and I'm happy with the final product. A lot of, so the police are, the police are kind of funny in that half of my department is for the concealed carry.
Reciprocity?
Through the states, yes. And the chiefs are not. And the chiefs are not, particularly because of firearms licensing, and we know what we do here in Massachusetts for firearms licensing. You could go to Vermont or New Hampshire with a driver Vermont's license from New Hampshire or Vermont, and you can get that through a post office box. Go buy a gun in Vermont and come back to Massachusetts, and now you're in Massachusetts, and we have no idea who's carrying what weapons. I mean, to a degree, we don't anyway, with the illicit or straw purchases go, but at least we do a good job here of regulating. If every state in the country was as strict as Massachusetts with firearms licensing, then I would be all for, all for that, but...
Reciprocity.
Thank you, Dan. But we're not. So, I don't think federally, I don't think it's, I think, I still think it's a states' rights issue.
That's what I was about to say.
But federally, we're definitely not there. And having worked a lot of gun cases and a lot of gun crimes and worked extensively with the ATF, I'm all for the way Massachusetts licenses, and I'm definitely for this resolution.
I have a couple of questions for the chief, if I may?
Sure. You're not gonna make me say that word, are you, gonna hear?
Chief, when you license a gun owner, they get a handout, I assume, on the law of the land, the law of our city and Massachusetts regarding gun storage and gun safety. Do they know they have to have their guns, do they have to have them in a safe and stuff like that, or trigger locks?
Yes, and they actually get that in the firearms licensing class that they have to take, which is mandated by the state before they can even come and apply for a license. So, they have to go through a firearms licensing class before they can even come to us. And they have to present a specific certificate with a specific state seal on it, signed by specific instructors with specific numbers that are known to us.
What's so bad about that? Another state. I just don't understand it. Okay, that's great. I just wanted to know how, because it says we're gonna educate them, and that's how we do it. Because if you get a license, you have to learn how to use the weapon, how to store it, what the laws are. That's fantastic. I just didn't know what we did.
And I think the overriding theme in this resolution from Counselor Zarek is education. The overriding theme in all of this, particularly, is education and promoting and enhancing education.
The only other question I have for you is, Counselor Zarek, is under his federal hopes of things happening, do we do universal background checks better in Massachusetts by state law? In other words, if you're gonna buy a gun, you have to get the major background check before you can buy it?
Yes.
Federal law doesn't override that.
No, but federally, there's still a waiting period, but we do, in my opinion, we do a much better job in Massachusetts with our background checks than most states do.
And the last one, what is that thing called where, something red where you're...
Red flag?
Red flag, where, is it a psychiatrist can red flag somebody, or how does...
Family kind of, yeah.
Family can. And that's different in Massachusetts than other places?
Yes, yes. And, but other states are, but other states are now adopting that as well.
How does that work? If I have somebody I think is suicidal or dangerous to himself or others, I can notify you?
Well, you would notify me, but we would send you to the court. You would actually petition the court to revocate, suspend somebody's license based on the red flag. We, I mean, we have packets at the station that we would hand them and send, direct them to district court.
Okay.
And that's, that's been a loophole in the law for many, many, many years. We send our lists of candidates that come in and apply to DMH, the Department of Mental Health, but those are for people that are spending a significant amount of time in patients. So, if somebody is Section 12, or they go in and they come right back out, those folks don't make the DMH list, which is another loophole. And so, if I'm talking about loopholes in Mass law, imagine what other states are...
We have, we have a few loopholes, but they're nothing.
Right, exactly, right.
I mean, you couldn't buy an assault weapon, so bump stock wouldn't be something you'd get anywhere, right? Because you can't purchase or own an assault weapon.
You cannot now, no.
All right. Well, the only other thing I wanted to make amendment to is request the mayor join Mayors Against Illegal Guns. I just think it's a council resolution, and we should just say, "Request the mayor." We don't join it, the council.
Request, yeah.
Request that the mayor join.
Yeah, that works for me.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
But otherwise, this is...
I didn't mean to imply command.
No, I didn't agree that way, so.
I think it's fantastic, it's educational, and I agree that there are times when we have to bring it forward. And I was educated this evening, because I asked, I'm glad you're here, I learned things of, I didn't realize how much you have to do to get a firearm. You have to go through training. It'd be great if the NRA just stepped in and did that for states. That'd be a great thing. They know weapons, they, anyway, I think it's great.
And the licensing process itself is an eight to 10, eight to 10 to 12 week process before you come in and apply by the time you get your license back.
Well, you have to do that to drive a car. Yeah, sorry.
So, yeah.
Can I add one thing? Just something I was thinking about here, and I included in my cover letter, is that, you know, when we have to design our brand-new school to have design elements in order to mitigate against an active shooter, then that means that there's a problem there, right?
Right.
And, you know, the fact that we even have to think about that, I don't think that was something we had to think about when we were, when they were designing schools for us. And also, recently, really poignantly too, you know, the dripples effect from this, you know, gun violence doesn't only, gun violence doesn't only result in the deaths of the people directly affected by those bullets, but as we saw recently with the survivors of both Parkland and Sandy Hook, with suicide, and by the way, I believe, and Anne can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the number one, the number one death by firearms is suicide. I think it's like 42,000 people or something like that, I might be wrong, but, so, so that's an issue.
That's great.
And I'm not, it's not to say that if we do these things, all of this will magically go away, but I think that it's a start. And again, the intention here is not to take anyone's firearms away, it's just to make sure that people in possession of firearms are doing so responsibly, and we're keeping, we're keeping firearms out of the hands of individuals or preventing situations in which these tragedies can, you know, cannot happen again.
Can I ask a question? A follow-up, chief, or what? As we said, I was curious, if you petition the court and they remove the license, does that also, do they also remove the handgun, or is it just strict for gun?
Yes.
Or is it only just the license?
No, 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 one, they're in concert. So, as soon as somebody loses their firearms license, they will also lose their firearms. We then would go to the, go to the residency and remove the firearms. Same thing with the domestic restraining order, we remove firearms for that. And then, we do suspend, the next, the other nice thing about Massachusetts, it's an education piece, is every single day when somebody goes to court, or somebody gets arrested and goes to court, that arrest pops up in our firearms licensing queue, so that we know that they were arrested and there's some sort of court action that's being lodged against them, so we can make a determination at that time that there, it's something that's revocable or suspendable, without having to wait for the courts to process paper and send it to us or read it in the paper. So, it's automatic. Now, if somebody goes to court and is arraigned on something, that arrignment's automatically put into our firearms licensing queue. And so, with my firearms licensing bureau, they check that daily, so that they can go in there and you can either take action on something, or, like, say, say somebody's arrested for a domestic, they live in East Hampton, but they're arrested for domestic in Westfield. We normally wouldn't know that unless we pick up the paper, or Westfield will call us. But now, with this, with this system, Westfield Court, as soon as they're arraigned, they, the courts put it into our system called Merck's in our queue, and we go in there and look and say, "Oh, this person was arrested for a domestic. We're now going to suspend their license today because of the charge of a domestic or restraining order." So, that's, that's something that was formed to us 10 years ago, and I guarantee it was formed to other states. But it's real-time court action.
That helps your officers know what they're up against.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, and again, if the disposition on the court case, when it's all played out, is favorable to the defendant, then they'll read, state their license, and get all their guns back.
Can I ask you, do you know if you have a domestic violence issue? I think I asked Bruce this, actually, one time. If you go to a home, how many weapons are in at home because of the licensing structure of the state?
Not because of the licensing structure of the state, but because of the firearms, the way the firearms are registered. But, the caveat there is the way the firearms are registered today is much different than it was 20 years ago. So, people that either bought guns 20 years ago, or they exchanged guns 20 years ago, is much different than the way that they're transferred today.
So, you don't know about those guns?
Right, so it's information, good information in, there's bad information in, bad information out.
There's no requirement to register all your weapons?
There is now. No, there is now, and it's automated, and then you do it right through the state's portal and the website. The old, it's an old F-10 form, now you just have to hand, right? It's all internet-based now. But if you had guns 20 years ago, that, those guns wouldn't show up on this database.
Yeah, but if you have to renew your license now, are they required, a person required to put those guns into the database, no?
Absolutely not, no.
Why not? I mean, I'd want you to know.
Be cumbersome, for sure, but...
Why would it be cumbersome?
Registering everybody's guns when they're coming to get a firearms license, would be a lot of work.
No, I'm asking a person to know, to have to put it into your database, so this guy has 10 weapons, why wouldn't you want to know?
But it's not our database, it's a statewide...
Well, whatever it is, but I mean, if it's a database that you can have access to, when you have a domestic violence issue, and you know that this guy has a lot of weapons...
Well, in that case...
I mean, whether they're 20 years old or not.
In that case, if we take all the guns, then we know, because if we take all the guns on a domestic, like that you speak of, if we take all of the guns, then we put them in our in-house computer, and they go, they all go into evidence.
No, you have, all I'm saying is, you have a call, domestic violence issue, and the officer in the car looks up and says, "Oh, this guy has 10 weapons." There's no way he's gonna know that.
There is a way, there is a way to do that, but what I'm saying, that information's not reliable because of what I said about the 20-year gun. What they can pull up in real time is that, is that they have a firearms license, and that is helpful.
If they have a firearms license, then you know, okay, you better go in there and back off.
As a, pretty good they have a firearm. And also, you know, I don't have to tell you guys what domestic calls are the worst calls.
Well, yeah, and you must be very cautious when you're going for those.
So, just to...
Okay, sorry.
I just, for the public's benefit, I want to reiterate that when we write resolutions, we are not passing any particular law, we are just communicating the preference and the beliefs of the council to the public, to our mayor, to our department heads, and to our state and federal elected officials, because that just seems like relevant context.
Of course. I think that's important to say.
Yes. When I was looking this over, I had an interesting little journey, because at first, there was something, I grew up in a pretty rural area, I grew up around a lot of farmers, I grew up around a lot of people who had firearms, had a very different relationship to firearms than maybe a lot of folks in East Hampton did, and I, at first came at this with this idea that maybe I needed to go through and look at each policy that's proposed here, and the evidence towards each of those policies, and what I thought about each of those policies. And then, I sort of had a change of heart this weekend. I went to a convention in Nashville, and totally unbeknownst to me, Emma Gonzalez, the Parkland survivor, was a speaker there, and ended up staying afterwards. So, we went to, like, the same parties, and I didn't actually end up speaking to her, because there was a lot of people who wanted to, but she made a really interesting point about how we can get into the minutia of conversations about gun violence, but it's sort of pointless right now, because a mixture of things that are wrong with the way that money gets into politics, the way that our congressional districts are drawn in a way that allows, that means that sometimes the most important election is the one to your party's base. A lot of these things like this make it so that a lot of these conversations about gun violence are in vain until we make some sort of fundamental reforms to things like the role of lobbying organizations in our government. And then, looking at all of this, the one bit of data, I did, most of these policies are fairly popular with most Americans, regardless of party, regardless of gun ownership status. Doesn't mean that everyone agrees with them, doesn't mean that I necessarily agree with every single thing on here, but there's very popular policies that deserve a public hearing, that deserve a robust conversation in a way that they are not getting. And if we, as a council, can state our opinions to our elected officials, who largely probably already agree with most of this, but if that can be part, a very small part of a larger conversation about, or a larger movement to have these conversations, to actually have them, then I think that's a good thing, and so I support this in its entirety, and I would move that we adopt them.
Second.
All those in favor? What's that? I didn't know if we... Now that they've had a chance to read it, I should read one. Do you guys, yeah, would you guys like to say anything?
Pull the motion up.
All right, yeah, fair enough. It's hands-down the most eloquent motion.
James, like, third.
Lot better than I expected.
We did one backboard.
Wes, is that what's called a backhand?
That's the best I was gonna think of.
That was pretty good, Wes.
It's a lot better than, it's a lot better than I expected. I don't know, the education pieces I like, it's not, it's not punitive or aggressive, I think, you know? There's some things that do make sense in here, I also don't agree with everything in here, but I think that it's, you know, it's, it's, I don't know if it could be better.
Wow, thank you.
I mean, it's...
It means a lot to me, I appreciate that.
I do.
You have this.
Vote now on concealed carry reciprocity. I think it's a terrible thing to encourage, and the way that it's specifically worded does not, does not denote the national reciprocity, because we do share reciprocity with some, we don't.
Not a one, not a single one.
Pennsylvania does. Pennsylvania doesn't. Florida does.
We had a woman come in to get printed for a Utah firearms license, because once you get the Utah one...
You can get it in Berkeley, yeah.
Yeah, like every other state in the...
But not here.
But not here.
But not here, okay.
Well, were you here, I mean, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. I mean, like I said, I mean, something I would love to see is some sort of national, like, federal-level concealed carry.
Yeah, I agree with that either. But, okay, the other two problems I have, high capacity is not defined, and assault weapon not defined. I mean, if we're encouraging our legislators to define assault weapon the way Mara Healy does, we're basically asking people to fight with muskets.
No, we're not. That's ridiculous, sorry. Well, sorry.
Well, there's a multiple schools of thought on that. One is, there's two different, so you can only buy certain firearms in Massachusetts, and there's two different lists. The one's the D.O.S., the Executive Office of Arms and槍safety's list, and then there's the Attorney General's List.
Why aren't they the same?
Okay, thank you.
Pass.
But, and the other issue is, is some firearms that, like we, the police, carry, just a handgun, by way of example, we carry locks, and you cannot buy them in Massachusetts, unless you're the police, because they're not, there's nothing wrong with them, they're perfectly fine, they're no different than a Smith and Wesson, they're just not on the list for no, for no really good reason. So, to that end, I do partially agree with Jay in that a definite... So to that end, I do partially agree with Jay in that the definition of what is high capacity. But I think my simple solution to that is with high capacity and assault weapons are under the law, because they are defined under the law.
Is it on the sunset? Is that the federal assault weapon?
I'm sorry, can I get your name? I just want to put the minute.
Sure, Jay.
Common spelling. Crazy.
J-A-Y. Thank you.
So Jay, I agree with, I would echo what the chief says. I mean, if I included, I mean, there are accepted definitions. If I included those, would that be, do you think that would be more helpful?
I would not support it.
Right.
But if you included those, I would also not show up tomorrow.
So it's not going to help him?
But it makes more sense.
At least it makes a little...
No, but we've talked and we've had some conversations about this. I mean, I value, I mean, the best thing about discussions like this is getting all inputs, getting everyone's input. I mean, like, if we all agree on everything, then we never make progress. So, I mean, if you think it's confusing, not confusing, but you think if it's vague, I could definitely include kind of the generally accepted definitions for those terms.
I think what Jay's saying is if you're going to ask, you're asking the legislature to do something, don't leave it up to them.
Quanify.
Tell them what you want them to do, because...
You're talking at the federal level.
Right.
With this, these references.
No, that's a good one. Quanify what you're asking.
If you're going to ask them to do something...
And if you use Mara Healy's, I support it.
I would...
If you're going to limit it to something else, geez, I'd like to read that.
My recommendation would be the federal, what the federal...
Definition.
Definitions, because you're asking the federal government representatives.
I'm sorry. If we included language saying, "Prevent the sale of high-capacity magazines and assault weapons as defined by federal law," that'd work.
Add, let's add, so add language to assault weapons. Can you update this for the full council tomorrow?
Yeah, if you can...
Just add language to the assault weapon section.
Let me just...
As defined by the federal government.
States 10.
Is it federal law or is it federal regulation?
Federal law. States 10. I'm 90% sure that the feds are 20. I'll look it up. I will.
As defined by...
I just, I don't want counsel to rest the fact that the enforcement notice that went out from the Attorney General's Office, no one had to turn in their assault weapons. So all of the existing copycat assault weapons, the thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands that have been created, manufactured in our state, and then sold in our state are still here. It's just...
You just can't sell them now.
Right.
I'll tell you another good point, which is, this is an East Hampton matter. Yankee Hill Machine, who builds assault rifles right here in East Hampton, can't sell them in Massachusetts.
Yeah.
So they're building a product here in East Hampton that they can't even sell, never mind in the city, but in the state.
It's kind of an interesting dynamic.
It really is. But it goes back to Massachusetts licensing and firearms laws that are, like I said, the most strict in my view of the country.
Yeah, and it doesn't prevent hunting or public safety. I mean, you can still have a concealed carry.
And I think if you look at the numbers of gun violence in Massachusetts, it's far below, certainly the national average. And I would say far below that.
Don't say Vermont.
Well, I'll ask you like... Vermont has tougher laws.
It's like a Snickers commercial.
It's not really easy to have...
To cherry pick, yeah.
And it's really easy to not have a whole lot of gun violence when you stay at 15 people there 20 miles apart.
Chicken, Bernie.
This is a resolution. We're not creating law. And I think adding a little bit of language on assault weapons, asking the legislature to do that, we could get really into the minutia of all of these federal government representative ideas. But I think the bottom, what's here is the intent.
Yeah.
And I think that's all we need. I mean, I don't want to keep going over every one of these now and say, "Hey, what about this or that?" Because we're not making the law. They are. They know what we're thinking, is what I'm saying. So I'd like to, except for adding the language, "Request the mayor against to join," and then after assault weapons defined as defined by federal law, except for those two changes, I think it's fine as it is.
I would tend to agree. So unless anyone has any objection, I'll move to...
The what last thing?
All right.
The Centers for Disease Control, do they study cars or ladders or things like that?
I do think they study automobile. I'm not sure about ladders. I'm not sure.
OSHA does that.
Yeah. All right. I'll move that we accept the, I'll move that we recommend that the council...
As amended.
Accept the resolution for firearm safety and against gun violence as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. So the intention is for this to come tomorrow?
Yeah.
I'm not, I wasn't, yeah, okay.
It's on the agenda.
Right, it's on the agenda. Well, it's...
Thanks for freeing up my night, man.
All right, so we have most of the minutes written.
Beautiful. But that's all we have.